Let's call to order and start the recording.
Okay, Katie Scanlon.
That's me.
Marty Wood.
Here.
Me.
Tom Boudreau.
He was here.
He's here.
I am here, I just couldn't unmute.
Okay.
Nate Woody, who is excused? Hillary Evans?
She's absent, she's excused as well.
Tony Capon?
I am here.
And Tim Ryan? No? Kyle Felice, CEO?
Here.
Liz Burdick, planner?
Here.
I'm here too.
Mike Cherry.
Mike? Cherry?
Oh, we forgot Mike.
I'm here.
I see, I skipped him. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think we should appoint Tony as the as a voting member tonight, so we have five.
Okay with me.
Okay. So then I guess we'll get started. We have first item on the agenda is are there any additions or changes to the order of the agenda?
I have, I have none, Madam Chairman.
Okay. Are there any citizen petitions that are not on our agenda this evening?
Hello, how are you? I'm not sure if this is a petition.
Okay.
But I'm a resident owner at 96 Whalehead Road. And I just sort of wanted to get some guidance on a permitting question regarding ADUs.
Excuse me, sir, could you state your name for the record, please?
Sure, my name is Jonathan Larry, and again, I'm at 96 Whalehead Road.
Okay.
Let me get my video here. So yeah, I just we're the owners, been the owners for, since 2013. We have an accessory structure which is detached. So that was the, the main hiccup as far as a feasibility plan of, of making the barn into sort of an in-law suite for, for aging parents. And I want just to seek some guidance on, you know, the current zoning regulations. I have read that it's not permitted in detached structures. And what options we may have, or, you know, what, what the process is. As far as, you know, I also saw there's no variances are permitted. So just wanted to sort of see some, some background information on this, I know it's been discussed before. I guess the first hurdle would be this, the second hurdle would be checking feasibility with Ledgered.
So maybe we could recommend that you could make an appointment with the planner, Ms. Burdick, to discuss that. And there, you know, there are some regulatory elements regarding ADUs that are happening on the state level that are, that could potentially impact this. But, but for now, you're right that we don't allow them in, in separate buildings, if any other commissioners would like to comment. We can't hear you, Mike.
If I could, we, we discussed this the last time we modified the zoning regs and we modified Section 8.1 accessory dwellings or to remove the requirement that it be for an in-law, so you say in-law apartments, now it says accessory dwellings. And we did discuss detached as well as attached, we couldn't, we couldn't reach a consensus and we couldn't feel the sense of the community saying that it was time to go to a detached structure as an accessory dwelling unit. There were, there was more opposition voice than any proponents for it, nobody came forward saying, I really want this.
Yeah, sort of what we always imagined with the property when we bought it. But yeah, because I attached structure is so highly regulated, which is just, you know, I just didn't realize, understand why it couldn't be in a detached if it met the same standards.
It, it opens the door to many things that could be problematic in some of our smaller districts, so it was we didn't reach out and try and approve it because it was a pretty big hurdle. But that doesn't mean it can't be something that we wouldn't pursue in the future.
Sure.
But, but I would suggest not only talking to Liz, but I think you're right, check with the health district on what the requirements would be for a separate residential structure on a lot, can you hook that up to your existing septic system? What are the rules, do you need a waiver from deep? Can you, if you have to put in a separate septic system, you might want to talk to some of the contractors that do that.
Sure.
It could price you out of something that sounds really nice really quickly.
Yeah, of course, and that's why I wanted to just gain the, the first, first day knowledge of the feasibility of the, the plan, yeah. Okay.
But I, I would
Mr. Treaster?
I would socialize it first before I would propose any type of a change to the regulations. If you propose a change of the regulations on your own, that could be very expensive and very unsatisfying, so I think socializing it, seeing what the sense of the community is, maybe talk to others at other meetings, go to the land use meeting or the town council, see what they think. And see if you can get a ground swell of people that might be in support of it.
Sure. Okay. All right, I appreciate the time.
Welcome. Are there any other citizens with petitions or questions for the board before we open up our public hearings for the evening?
Katie, if there are no citizens petitions, is it possible for us to go back to item three additions to and or changes to the order of the agenda and perhaps make a motion to move that zoning permit application up since we have a gentleman that's sitting in his truck trying to get signaled to log on to the meeting?
Thank you, Liz, that's a great suggestion, if, if the commissioners are in agreement. We would move item number.
It's a new business item. So it would be new business item.
One A.
Yes. So we would need.
I would make that motion, I make a motion that we move new business item A1 to be first on the agenda.
I second that.
Okay, all in favor, let's see. Tom? Boudreau?
Yes, in favor.
Tony?
Aye.
Mr. Cherry?
Aye.
I know I'm missing someone, can, I can't see everyone.
Marty Wood.
Marty, thank you. What's your vote?
I guess.
Okay. And I vote yes, so the motion passes 5-0.
So if you wanted to go to that item, our zoning official Kyle Felice is on the meeting and he might be able to give you a little bit of background and then the applicant is actually here, as I said, trying to hold on to some signal. I think he's still here, are you still here, Jeff?
I am.
Okay. So we have an application, is, sorry, is Kyle with us?
I am here, I have a staff memo, I can quickly go through it if you want.
That'd be great, thank you Kyle.
Okay, so applicant, it's for Northeast Truck and Offroad, they did a change of use last year on Route 12, 1504. It's close to the intersection down there. But basically, some of the signage has already approved, but part of the zoning regulations section, I'm sorry, 9.6C requires that any internally illuminated signs require commission review. So I've reviewed the sign itself and the location, which both comply with the current zoning regulations. However, the internal illumination still needs commission approval before I can grant that, so that's why the applicant's here tonight, to look at the internal illumination. And I hope the applicant can address that a little more clearly.
Okay, so then Jeff, we invite you to share with us information about your sign?
All right, so I talked to the gentleman, the business doing his fast signs, Tony Sibilia. I called him and he said that LED interior light is, is what I should say here, and it's not you know, it's nothing crazy, it's not, he said it's just permanent interior light, LED.
Okay. Looking at the exhibit that has that drawing by fast signs. It looks like it is a freestanding sign that stands about 21 and a half feet tall. And the sign itself is about 60 inches by 30 inches plus a 12-inch additional sign for a future tenant?
Yeah, that would be, I think, I think the sign height was 18 feet, not 21 though, if I'm correct.
That's correct, the, the print's a little dark on the copy, but it does meet the height requirements.
Okay. Do any commissioners have questions?
If I could, I don't know if I'm muted or not, I gotta.
We can hear you.
Okay. LED signs are nice because you can have automatic dimming so that it's not too bright, as it gets darker, it doesn't need to be as bright. Is Tony providing that, or is it one illumination?
I believe, I believe he said it was, it was one illumination. If you needed the, the lumens, he can, he can follow up with that with me and then I can email you that if you'd like.
You're, you're in a commercial district, so it's not you know, it's not like you're, you're influencing residential areas, so I'll I don't want to go to an approval with conditions, just if it, if that can be on file with the zoning official with the permit, I think that's all I would ask for.
So again, this is on Route 12, it's in Gales Ferry Design District. In the picture of the proposed sign, you can actually see the sicko sign behind it, very similar. So again, it's not going to stand out, it's right on Route 12, these kind of signs are very common there.
Kyle, you said it was in the Gales Ferry Design District, I thought at that point I was still in the
You're correct, I'm sorry, it's CIP.
It's in the CIP, so we, I mean, you know, at this spot, we have the gas station next to it, the rental space rental across the street and a small plaza across the street. And next to him on the other side of the driveway is the transmission repair place, so I mean, he is in, not only in a commercial district, but there are no adjacent residential uses as I remember, is that correct?
I'm sorry, I was muted there. Yes, you're correct, there's a storage place across the street, there's a garage in the corner there, which you guys are all familiar with, some other businesses, some other tenants, but that's correct.
Thank you, those are my questions.
Would anyone like to propose a motion?
You're muted, Mike.
We can't hear you still, Mike.
Okay, now you can hear me.
Yes.
But I can't see my motion, so let me all right. I'd, I'd like to make a motion that after giving due concern to all relevant factors, including the permit, all relevant factors, including the permit application 5245 with its supporting documentation and Section 9 on the Ledgered zoning regulations, I move the illumination of the internally lit freestanding sign proposed in zoning permit application 5245 for 1504 Route 12. Applicant Jeff Mazzella of Northeast Truck and Offroad be approved and grant the zoning official authority to give approval of the sign to the applicant.
I second that motion.
Thank you, Tom. So now we'll take a vote. I'm going to pull up my list so I don't forget anyone again. So we'll have Mr. Boudreau.
In favor.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Cherry?
Yes.
Mr. Capone?
Aye.
And chairman votes aye, so passes 5-0. We're all set. Thank you for joining in from Vermont.
Thank you very much, I appreciate you guys' time and enjoy enjoy the weekend, I know it's not the weekend yet, but it's my weekend, so have a great, a great night, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes.
Oh no, I'm, I'm all set.
Okay, so now we will resume the order of the rest of our agenda, we'll move back to the public hearings and applications. So at this time am I supposed to say the time? 7/7/17, we will reopen the public hearing for application PZ 20-06 SUP 20 Lorenz Industrial Parkway, which is a modification of a previously approved special permit for a recycling facility. Property owner Generation 4 Realty and the agent Ellen Bartlett, PE of CLA Engineers. Liz, would you like to read the new exhibits?
Yes, I'd be happy to, thank you, so, and bear with me because I'm going back and forth. So Exhibit 22 is a transmital letter from CLA Engineers to Liz Burdick, Town of Ledgered, noting that they are submitting site development plans revised, response to Groton comments and drainage report revised that was received on March 25, 2021. There's also a letter and it, it's Dear Ms. Burdick, we have received a letter from Richard Stevens, Groton Utilities, and have addressed their concerns as follows. And they go forward addressing all the concerns. They've also submitted on the same date drainage calculations hydraulic and hydrology report dated October 20th revised to March 18, 2021. So that's Exhibit 22. Exhibit 23, 24, and 25 are revised plan sets, and bear with me because I'm pulling them up as I'm speaking. And this is revised plan and it is revised to 32521, and we receive the revised plan set sheets 1, 2, and 3 on 325. Next item is a PZC transmittals letter to the town engineer from Liz Burdick, asking him to review the revised plans. And the last exhibit is so that would be Exhibit 27, the transmitter letter, Exhibit 28 would be a, a continuance letter, and I'll read that into the record quickly and then I'll just explain it. The letter's dated today, April 8, 2021. Addressed to the Town of Ledgered, Ms. Elizabeth Burdick, regarding modified site plan, on behalf of the owners of the above referenced project, this firm is requesting a continuance of the public hearing to the May 13 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. In addition, the applicant is granting an extension of time for the closing of the public hearing until May 13, 2021, and I've, it's signed Ellen M. Bartlett, PE from CLA Engineers, and I've done the math. We received an extension of time until to this meeting, and they are now granting us another extension of time. And you can have any number of extensions of time up to no more than 65 days for any time period. Also, the governor's executive orders give us an additional 90 days for any time period, so for closing the hearing, not only are we within our normal extension time periods, but we are within the governor's executive orders, which were extended to May 19. The reason that the applicant is requesting this, the plans came in on 325. They were sent to Groton Public Utilities, to the Department of Public Health, to Ledgered Health District, and to our town engineer by me. The town engineer was on vacation until this past Tuesday and has not had a chance to review them yet. When I contacted Groton Public Utilities, they claimed they did not get the plans, although I saw an email that Ms. Bartlett sent them on the 25th with the plans. So I have now resent the plans to them and we should, I've asked for comments as soon as possible that, so that we can address any of their concerns before our May 13 meeting and have time to to make any changes, so the applicant has requested the hearing be continued to the May 13 meeting, and so therefore I would ask that the commission make a motion to do so.
Thank you, Ms. Burdick. At this time, are the applicant and or consultant in the meeting, if they wanted to speak? Give them a moment to do that?
Madam Chairman, they actually asked if they had to be there, and I said, since it was being continued, that I would give and provide an explanation of why they're asking and they did not have to be there, I know Ms. Bartlett was leaving for vacation, so.
Okay, just making sure.
Yep.
So then we do have, if there are any statements from citizens on this matter this evening, or should we table that, because it's continued until next week, next month?
I, I would, I mean, certainly if there's someone that wants to speak on it, but the revised plans have not been reviewed yet. So certainly I would perhaps ask members of the public to wait to see the revised plans and comment, but it's entirely up to you, if, if there are members of the public, I would certainly allow them to speak.
So if there's anyone that would like to speak on this, which will be continued next month, now's the time, otherwise we will close it for the evening and make a motion to continue it to next week, next month. Are you trying to speak to us, Mr. Cherry?
No.
Okay. I kept seeing a change, okay. Then in that case, I would make a motion to continue this public hearing to next month, considering the applicant's request for continuance.
I would second that.
You actually have the authority to just continue the hearing without a vote, but.
Oh, okay, good, well then let's do that.
Perfect.
Madam Chair, I, I have a question, I know that as a commissioner I didn't thoroughly look at it, but this really is for Liz. I'd like to know the thickness of the concrete that bituminous concrete that they're putting in, I, I didn't see the thickness laid out there, so I know you have said that you haven't gotten a chance to review that, but I would like to know ahead of time, I'd like to know by the time that we vote on it next month, what the thickness of that concrete bituminous concrete that they're laying in there. And then also, thanks, one other question. Our town engineer mentions MS4 best management practices for bituminous concrete. And I'd like to know what that is, so that I can factor that into a decision next month.
Absolutely.
I believe, Commissioner Wood, I believe that there's details on page three with a paving section that shows three inch by two minutes concrete. I'm not sure if that addresses your question.
Thanks, I, I got tired of reviewing those. It's easier to ask the question, but thank you, Ms. Scanlon, and the other one is about MS4 best management practices when associating, when using bituminous concrete for parking lots.
I, yes, Mr. Wood, I have that on my list and I will ask the town engineer to include that in his report.
Thanks very much.
Madam Chair, so for the record, Carl Landelina. I know that the planner mentioned the date of next month's meeting, May 13, but for the record, I think if you're going to continue this, you should actually state the date publicly so that since you're the one continuing it, that it's in the record that it was continued to a date certain.
Not just next month, thank you. Then we will correct the notes and notify the public that the hearing will be continued until May 15, is it the 15th?
The 13th.
The 13th, until May 13th, when it will be reopened.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That being said, you should table item B to the same meeting, which is the discussion and decision of the application.
Okay. Agreed, so we'll table item B until that time? Till May 13th? And then with that, we'll move on to item number C, which is the public hearing and application number PZ 2102 RA. The zoning regulation text amendments. The applicant is the Ledgered Planning and Zoning Commission for the proposed regulation amendments regarding temporary forms of outdoor entertainment to revise Section 3.5, which is the uses by district, and to add new Section 8.72 supplemental regulations for temporary forms of outdoor entertainment. This was continued from May 11. So we do have two new exhibits. Liz, would you like to read them?
Yes, actually, we have three, I initially thought there were two, I apologize, so let me just get back to my agenda here. So the first new exhibit is Exhibit 10. It is a draft that was posted in the clerk's office on the 15th of March, which was right after the meeting. The changes were actually discussed at the meeting and I can certainly go through the regulation if Attorney Landelina believes that I should, I can read through it. For some reason, I don't have my notes on here with the changes. But we had discussed them at the meeting, so Attorney Landelina, do you think I should read the regulation into the record?
I don't believe that's necessary.
Okay, all right, so that's Exhibit 10, it was filed in the town clerk's office on March 15, 2021. Item 11 is an email, and I'm pulling that up right now. It was from Rosemary Gartska, sent Monday, March 15, 12:29 PM to Deb Dobson, copied to Fred Allen III, subject application PZ 2102 RA. It's very short, so I'll just read it into the record quickly. Rosemary Gartska, 10 Pleasantview, Ledgered Heritage Hill Farm, miniature donkey farm, to the planning and zoning commissioners. Mr. Treaster has done a great job in his analysis of the proposed text amendment for application PZ 21-02 RA. Temporary forms of outdoor entertainment, it was spot on, hopefully the P and Z commission will take into account what he has written in Mr. Treaster's submitted paper, Part 2, Number 8, dealing with temporary forms of outdoor entertainment, which would apply only on the 17.9 acres at Sweet Hill Farms in Gales Ferry District. As Mr. Treaster said, the classic definition of spot zoning, why should the zone change just apply to 39 Military Highway and not the rest of the town? Cordial, Rosemary Gartska, and that would be Exhibit 11. Exhibit 12 is a document submitted by Eric Treaster this past Monday, April 6, 2021, and it April sixth, twenty twenty-one, and it's taking just a moment to come up, so bear with me. Almost done. Okay, it was received. No, I'm sorry, Monday, April fifth, not the sixth. I apologize. It's entitled Assessment of amended proposed regulations dated three fifteen twenty-one for temporary forms of outdoor entertainment. Eric Treaster, five, April twenty twenty-one, and it is a very long document, sixteen pages. So I'm not going to read it into the record, but I would, you know, certainly it has been posted on the town website since Monday. And I would, you know, certainly if there is any commissioners who haven't read it, you know, certainly I can sort of go through it, but it's very, very long and I and I was not planning on reading it into the record at this time. Have the commissioners read it?
Yes.
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 And I have as well.
Okay, so those are the three new exhibits since the last hearing. So the public hearing is continued, so certainly maybe you can open it up to the, for public comment right now. Our our land use attorney, Carl Landalina, is also here with us this evening if you have any questions for him. So I will turn it over to you, Madam Chairman.
Okay, at this time, would any citizens in favor of this like to speak? Okay, hearing none. Would any citizens opposed like to speak?
Madam Chairman, this is Eric Treaster.
Hi, Eric.
Hi. I'm not, I'm not really opposed to the idea, but I am opposed to the actual proposed wording for the changes to the regulations. For the record, my name is Eric Treaster and I reside at ten Huntington Way and I am representing only myself. In my opinion, the town fair and other large, medium and small outdoor entertainment events should be allowed at thirty-nine Military Highway. However, there are five reasons the proposed regulation should not be adopted. The first is that they impose requirements that are improper for uses that are allowed by right. For example, the proposed regulations impose a fifty-foot buffer requirement. However, a buffer is not a land use, is not a structure, is not a bulk requirement, and as defined in section two point two, is not a setback requirement. As such, in my opinion, buffer requirements cannot be lawfully imposed for uses that are allowed by right. If a buffer is required, then a special exception permit is required. Similarly, the proposed regulations impose a time period and an operating hour requirement. However, in my opinion, time periods and operating hours are not a land use, are not structures, and are not bulk requirements. As such, time periods and operating hours cannot be regulated for uses that are allowed by right. If it is important to regulate time periods and operating hours, then a special exception permit is required. The second reason is because the application for a proposed fair would require a subjective review and subjective reviews are not allowed for uses that are allowed by right. For example, the proposed regulations require a town-approved parking plan to assure the fair will not create on-street parking. In my opinion, the approval of the proposed parking plan will require a subjective evaluation, which is not allowed for a by-right use. The third reason is because the proposed regulations indirectly limit temporary outdoor entertainment events, such as town fairs to thirty-nine Military Highway, which in my opinion constitutes spot zoning as explained in my April fifth exhibit. My allegation is supported by the March second EDC meeting minutes, which show that the Ledger Fair Association is in the process of negotiating for the purchase of the Sweet Hill Farm, which is thirty-nine Military Highway. The fourth reason the proposed regulation should not be adopted is because they contain ambiguities, conflicts and omissions. For example, the proposed regulations allow outdoor theater productions by right in the Kales Ferry Design District, but the existing regulations require a special permit for outdoor theaters in the Gales Ferry Design District. I identified about a dozen other conflicts and omissions in my April fifth exhibit. The fifth reason is because the proposed regulations are not consistent with Ledger's comprehensive plan as required by section two point two A in the Connecticut General Statutes. A copy of the statute is in my April fifth exhibit. The comprehensive plan is not the P O C D, but refers to the ledgered zoning regulations in their entirety. The reason the proposed regulations are not consistent with the comprehensive plan is because they allow large, intrusive and potentially hazardous uses, like fairs and circuses, with only an ordinary zoning permit, while the current zoning regulations require a special exception permit for smaller, less intrusive and less hazardous uses, such as for a duplex, for outdoor storage, for a mini golf course, or for a nursery. For example, the zoning regulations for home husbandry requires a special exception permit to have a goat. The application requires a five hundred sixty-dollar application fee, a written notice to abutting neighbors and a site plan that complies with section six point six B one and six point six B two of the zoning regulations. The site plan, which must be prepared by a licensed land surveyor, has about fifty requirements that must be satisfied for the application to be approved. The here, the application for a goat also requires the publication of two legal notices, a public hearing and dozens of subjective decisions by the commission to determine if the living quarters for the goat will create a health hazard, if the handling and disposal of the goat's solid and liquid liquid waste will create a public health hazard, if the solid and liquid waste from the goat will have an adverse effect on the environmental quality of the surrounding area, if the goat will adversely affect the performance of the average, of the sewage disposal system or the water supply located on the property or on adjacent properties, and if persistent or offensive odors from the goat will be detected off the premises. The commission must also determine if conditions of approval are necessary to protect public health, safety, convenience or nearby property values that would otherwise be caused by the goat. But for a town fair that will have children sleeping with their livestock, that will have noisy and potentially dangerous carnival equipment, that will generate tons of manure and other waste, that will have power distribution cables exposed on the ground, that will have carnival workers living in trailers, that will have the sale of food and alcohol, that will have horse-pulling contests and lawn mower races, and that will have dozens of exhibit tents, multiple P A systems, amplified music and complex sanitation, security, traffic, shuttle and parking challenges. The proposed regulations do not even require an application fee under the town's land use fee ordinance. The proposed regulations only require a hand-drawn sketch and an ordinary zoning permit, which is inconsistent with the Ledger's comprehensive plan and technically, I, in my opinion, is a violation of law. In my opinion, even with its shortcomings, it appears the goal is to adopt the proposed regulations as quickly as possible so the Town Fair Association will be able to acquire financing and proceed with the purchase of thirty-nine Military Highway in time to hold a fair this summer. It is also my opinion that if adopted, its shortcomings will likely cause unintended consequences. For example, the proposed regulations make it easy to successfully appeal their adoption. The proposed regulations will also make it easy for someone who is opposed to a fair to appeal a zoning official's decision to grant a fair permit. More importantly, because only a by-right zoning permit is required and conditions of approval cannot be imposed, the proposed regulations will increase the likelihood that a fair or a circus will harm public health, safety, convenience or property values. In summary, only three changes are necessary. The first, to avoid the spot zoning allocation, the proposed regulations should allow outdoor entertainment events in additional acceptable locations, such as on properties in the Ledger Center Design District, on large farms and outline residential districts, in the resort commercial cluster district, which is designed for such things, and perhaps in a C I P or and perhaps in the C I P and our industrial districts. Second, the errors, omissions, conflicts and ambiguities in the proposed regulations should be corrected. Third, and third, the last, the most important change of all, to be consistent with the comprehensive plan and to help avoid a risk to public health, safety, convenience and property values, the proposed regulations should require a special exception permit for outdoor entertainment events. This completes my presentation. I will provide a copy for the record and I look forward to your comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Treaster. Are there any members of the public who would also like to speak at this time? Any questions or comments from commissioners?
I have one short one from Mr. Treaster. I was transcribing as he was talking and I didn't get the full details of his recommended number two in a summary, if he could repeat that.
Yes. In summary, there are three changes that are necessary. The second, the second of the three were the the errors, omissions and conflicts and ambiguities in the proposed regulations should be corrected. And that will be fairly simple to do. I've identified them and it's just a matter of going through and fixing them. It shouldn't, it shouldn't take more than a few hours.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners? Thoughts, comments? If not, we we might close the public hearing and then have discussion. Unless there's any other members of the public who want to speak about this. Okay, hearing none. We will close the public hearing and move into the discussion.
You have a time, please?
It is seven forty-two.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
I could make a motion?
Oh, sure.
That way, that way we'll have something to discuss.
That sounds good.
I move that we adopt the proposed text amendment under application PZ twenty-one dash zero-two R A from the Ledger Planning Zoning Commission for the proposed zoning regulation text amendment for temporary forms of outdoor entertainment. As submitted, latest rev was the fifteenth, I believe.
Yes, March fifteenth.
March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Second is by Marty Wood.
Madam Chair, for the record, Carl Landalina. I would ask that perhaps Mr. Cherry could amend his motion to add that the commission is thereby specifically making findings that the that the proposed regulation is in, is consistent with the plan of conservation and development in the town's comprehensive plan and also fix a date, an effective date.
Thank you. I'd like to amend my motion to note that the commission has a finding that the proposed amendment is in a, is in concurrence with the town's plan of conservation and development in agreement with the town's comprehensive plan. And I would recommend an an adoption date of we're in April, one May, that's that's a couple of weeks out, which leaves time for yeah, publication and any actions that people may desire. Marty, I think you second.
I will second that revision.
Thank you. If I could start the discussion, I'll throw something out there. So I I read Mr. Treaster's comments. The first set of comments, the modified first set of comments. The second set to the first set, the proposed regulation and the last ones that we got earlier this week. I understand his concerns, but I think he doesn't understand, or he hasn't, he hasn't noted that we're not looking to approve this in residential areas, that there's a difference. Let me use the goat example. There's a difference between home husbandry with goats and a residential area with residential neighbors and temporary outdoor events in a commercial district, in the design district. The goats are permanent. The special use permit goes with the land forever. We're talking temporary events that'll be allowed forever after it's approved, but the events are limited in their duration and and they're in a commercial area. They're not in a large lot behind Mr. Treaster's house on ten Huntington Way, which would be large enough, but would be inappropriate. We looked at an event that was proposed on a parcel off of Gallup Hill Road and discouraged the people from really making that application or purchasing that property because it was in the midst of a high-density residential district with limited access. So so I think that that's the difference between the goat and what we're proposing. We're proposing a regulation for the whole district. We're not proposing a regulation for thirty-nine Military Highway. There are other parcels this could go on. There are ways to conglomerate parcels. There are ways to create ten-acre parcels within that district. So I I don't think that's a valid concern. It's it's pretty straightforward in my mind. The regulation is straightforward. In that area, in the past, in my recollection, as a former parishioner or lady of lords, I was very active in doing their parish festivals. Granted, that's across the street, maybe even out of the district. I'd have to go look again. But same thing, a weekend event, large groups of people, rides, kids, noise, amplified music. We didn't have elephants and camels and horses and such, but still a large event was accomplished at that site. So I I think this is adequate for the purpose it's intended, which is temporary outdoor events in a commercial district, and I strongly support approval.
Madam Chair, I would like to just comment also.
Please.
Thank you. I want to address this, the use of site plan, if I may. In the proposed change or addition eight twenty-seven under purpose A, it mentions an administrative site plan in Gales Ferry, Design District. And I, that use of the site plan complies with our zoning regulations with section fourteen point one C, which permits site plans to to conduct what wants to, what what this regulation is addressing. And so I I I I'm in support of approving this application and I just want to address that site plan isn't appropriate by our own zoning regulations to handle this. Another comment that I would have, and it's an editorial one, under eight twenty-seven C dot two, third sentence, it says the total of activities permitted that include amplified entertainment shall not exceed twenty-five days. And the word is with, but I think the word should be within because if one reads on, it also, in the last sentence there, talks about sixty days within a single calendar year. So I think it's just, it should be within instead of with eight point twenty-seven C point two. C point two line three, the with should be replaced with within. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Thoughts or comments?
I'd like to congratulate Marty for finding a word that passed spell check that looked right, and a lot of us read right through it and read within, so good catch.
Yes, and, and the motion should most likely be revised to add that revision that with should have been within.
I would concur with that. Ms. Burlick.
Okay.
I agree to modify my motion to correct with to within.
I still second that edited revised motion.
Thank you. I think I just want to spend a moment to take a look at what Mr. Treister brought to our attention regarding errors and make sure we don't see any errors that we should correct while we're, while we're on that. I, I disagree that properly shielded is subjective. I think there's, we could leave that, and it's better that the lights would be shielded from neighbors than that they wouldn't be required to be shielded. Does, do any commissioners find any problems with a minimum lot area of ten acres not also noting the size of the lot?
I feel that, that size a lot would be extra information that's not required. What we're saying is you need a minimum acreage. Do we really care if they have a hundred acres?
Or if it's continuous?
Or if it's continuous, it might want them to have ten acres. You know, previous suggestions were ten acres could be an awful lot for Mike Cherry and Tom Bedrow with two guitars to stand out and, and hold an event. But you know, adding different sizes for different events, I think would be appropriate maybe in a residential or some other area, but it's not required here. So I think ten acres and, and in other areas within our regs, we set minimum acreage. And we don't talk about the size of the lot. We talk about the minimum acreage to meet the requirement.
Okay. Some of the other items on here are regarding sketches and sign off from the Health Department. I think that the application site plan requirements are sufficient for the Health Department to make an adequate review for, for health and safety regarding the events. So I don't know if any of those, I find any of those necessary. So if, if, do we have any further discussion on this, or do we want to go ahead and take a vote? It sounds like we should take a vote.
I mean, we, it was well-written to start with. This is Mike Cherry again. And you know, we, there were things that were noted in other towns, surrounding towns' regulations that we cut and pasted, actually Nate cut and pasted into this with Liz's help, and, and those have served the test of time. You know, and there's subtleties, like the buffering is required between the event and any residentially zoned area. Not any residents, because within Leger as we've updated our zoning regs and maps, there are legally non-conforming residences in some of our non-residential districts. So we were careful to say residentially zoned rather than residents. So I, I mean, the author did a good job of, of looking out for the interests of Leger. So I think it's time.
And I also think it's concise. It's not wordy. It's not overly lengthy. I think that I agree with, with you, Cherry.
And, and I think this gravity would not work in a residential area. It wouldn't work in every zone in Leger. So I think in the future, we couldn't say, hey, we want to add our forty zones to this thing. We'd have to, it would, in my mind, that would probably require a special permit to protect the residential nature of where we're trying to land this. Just my opinion.
I agree, because we're talking about design districts and, and city centers, so. Okay, then I think that we will call a vote. So let's start with Mr. Bedrow.
In favor.
Mr. Wood?
In favor, yes.
Mr. Cherry?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Capone? And the chairman votes yes as well, so the motion passes five oh.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
For the record, Carl Landelina, I'm sorry, I should probably know this, but I don't. Um, how many regular members are there in the commission?
There are five regular members and three alternates.
Okay. All right, fine. It's because the regulation change requires approval by a majority of the membership. Not a mem, not a majority of those present in voting. So you have five, and you got five affirmative votes. That's, so that's, that's fine.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so we are going to move forward. Now on to the public hearing for item number E. Application PZ twenty-one oh four re-subdivision proposed two lot re-subdivision thirty-four Village Drive in Leger, Connecticut. Yes.
Real quick, that is not being opened this evening. That public hearing is set for five thirteen twenty-one already.
Did I go too far down in my list?
Yeah, we're on thirty-four Village Drive, which is E. But there's nothing to do tonight because we're not opening the hearing until five thirteen. So E and F would just, you just note that those matters are going, were already set last week for the May thirteenth meeting.
Okay, so the public hearing for this one is set for May thirteenth.
Yep.
And then also we'll, we'll have the discussion and decision on May thirteenth as well.
Correct.
Okay, so then we're moving on to old business. Application PZ twenty-one oh three subdivision proposed three lot subdivision forty-eight Town Farm Road. This is applicant Brian Coat for a sixty-five point three acre subdivision. It was received and tabled on March eleventh for review this evening. However, I believe, Ms. Burdick, we've, we've got some comments from your report that it's pending ledge light review.
Yeah, so actually, it's not listed on here because I received a request from the applicant after Deb had already left for the, for the day. But the, there were outstanding comments from ledge light. We had no ledge light Health District approval for all of the lots because the, some of the boundaries changed from the submission last winter. So the applicant has requested that the matter be tabled to the five fourteen twenty twenty-one meeting. I did actually confirm with Wendy Brown Arnold, who is our sanitarian from ledge light Health, who was nice enough to email me from her vacation to tell me that she hasn't received yet the information she needs to provide an approval, but that she will review the matter when she returns, and it should be ready for May fourteen, on May thirteen.
Yeah, I was just gonna mention, I think it should be changed for the record to the thirteenth.
Yeah, that was a typo on my part. I apologize.
Okay.
No, that's the dis, the decision required date is May fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. So a subdivision that is not subject to a public hearing has, you have sixty-five days to make the decision. The sixty-fifth day is May fourteenth, which is the day after. So we're good.
Okay, we'll just make it.
No extensions required. So, and I have every I believe that everything will be worked out. They addressed all of the comments that I had. They addressed all of the comments of Steve Maslin, so, but we can't, I can't even propose that to the commission to approve it with the condition of approval because you know, if the lots aren't suitable for wells and septic, you know, it, it cannot be approved. So that's the reason that I basically advised them that we could not go forward this evening. So they requested that, that it be tabled. So we just need a motion to table it to May thirteenth.
I'll make a motion to table application PZ twenty-one zero-three SUB proposed three lot subdivision forty-eight Town Farm Road to Leger until the next regular commission meeting on May thirteenth.
Second, Mike Cherry.
Okay, do we need to vote on that?
You might as well, since you have a motion. So yes, if you have a motion, you, you should vote on it.
Okay, thank you. Then, Mr. Bedrow.
In favor.
Mr. Wood?
Aye.
Mr. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Capone?
Aye.
And the chairman votes yes as well, so we'll table that until May thirteenth. New business. Item A, we're, we have some new applications to acknowledge and read into the record. We have a, a zoning application.
Yep, that one we
May, that one we have finished. Okay.
We're ahead of schedule.
This meeting's moving even quicker than we thought. I, number twenty-one dash oh five map amendment for one nine seven eight Route twelve, Gales Ferry. The owner applicant Donald Bazadoret for proposed map amendment change from neighborhood commercial district to medium-density residential district R forty. So we've received that, and the public hearing is set for May thirteenth. And the application packet is received. I don't know if that's a exhibit until next week.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I keep saying next week.
Madam Chairman, it'll be a, an exhibit when the hearing is opened on May thirteenth.
Okay. So then with that, we can move on to the discussion of our fiscal year twenty twenty-two capital improvement program and proposals. Have all the commissioners had a chance to look through this? And Liz, have we been able to get in touch with?
Yes, so we have, so if all of you recall, each year, the Planning and Zoning Commission reviews the capital requests of all the departments. And you know, if they have any comments, you, you typically, it would forward a report to the town council with recommended either changes, or they're happy that you're all happy with the capital requests as proposed. Typically, we have someone from the Board of Education here to answer any questions about its capital requests. And Wayne Donaldson, the Board of Education Facilities Director is on the line. Wayne, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, so oftentimes commissioners will have questions for Mr. Donaldson, so I would say please feel free to go ahead and do that. And then if you want to discuss any of the additional capital requests, we can do that. Otherwise, if everyone, you know, feels that they are good requests, you can forward that report to the town council as well. So I, I know, Mr. Cherry, you always have questions on the capitals, so.
If, if I could, it's Mike Cherry. First, I'd, I'd like to say thank you, because I see my pet peeve, we're actually proposing that we do roofs in this fiscal year. And I guess my question would be, has that been socialized? And do we expect to get the full three, three and a half million, one, eight and fours, two, two, three, two, yeah, three and a half million dollars for the roofs?
From the state reimbursement?
Well, what would our share be? Let me put it that way.
Your, your share would be sixty-two, well, it will end up eventually being whatever the rate is at the time the application is granted.
If it were today.
Sure, sixty-two point two-six percent, I believe.
So we, so we pay a third?
Yeah.
So that'd be about a million dollars in town funds.
Correct.
And, and have we noted, is there a willingness to go bond for that? The new report prints out, it's, it's hard for me to, it's a nice report. It puts everything in a neat package, and you can select what you're looking at. But, you know, trying to teach an old horse new tricks, I was used to seeing the spreadsheet with where the money was coming from.
Yeah, the, it only gives me a, a brief number of options as far as how, so I'm assuming that the town would bond it, put it that way. They, if they have excess funds, they could fund it that way.
If if this is not approved going forward, I mean, you know, we, we talk about road restoration not being approved, and that has an impact, but we've been carrying these roofs for quite a few years. Are any of them at the point where leakage is going to cause damage, or are we still able to patch them?
Uh, we're doing consistent patching throughout the year. We probably have roofers in between Gales Ferry and Juliette Long. I would guess probably six or seven times a year on each building. They, we've got leaks in the buildings that they have not been able to find. So yes, anytime you have water penetration, you have the option of mold, or fortunately, we have a lot of steel in the building, so we're not going to have wood rot. But the, some of the roofs, like especially Julian Long, is saturated. So we're losing a lot of heat through there because the insulation is no longer being effective.
Okay, the, the solar that we added, the right time to do it is when the new roof goes on. Is that also reimbursable by the state?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Those are my questions. I'm, I'm happy to see a list. I'm, I'm not very optimistic that the six point three million dollars will be funded, but I think the list and the justifications are, are quite revealing, and, and hopefully we can get there. Thank you.
I will tell you also that on the solar, we did put in a application for Z-Rex, which is the head to go in by April. They will be awarded sometime in June. And then we have two years to do the project from that point. They will generate about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in funds coming back to the the town or the district, however it's set up on these solar projects. So the payment, payback time on the solar is somewhere around four years or less.
Okay.
This is Marty Wood, Mr. Donaldson. So I'd like to just pick up a little bit on solar where Mike and you left off. So the sequencing of that, so that's, that's fantastic of seven hundred and fifty thousand annually and with the
Not annually.
Oh, oh, yes, okay.
Over the course of the contract.
Okay, good. I, yeah, I, I would be, having had solar panels on my house, I was envious of, of that, if there was annual, but thank you for correcting me on that. And so, so those would be sequenced by the roof, right? If they're on the, are they going on the roof?
Yes, they're going on the roof. So the recommendation would be to do them basically at the same time the roof is Yes, they're going on the roof. So the recommendation would be to do them basically at the same time the roof is done so that the penetrations and all are covered rather than have to bring a roofer back. And you know, uh have them come back to reseal penetrations and stuff at a later date.
And then uh the um the walkway cover between Juliette Long and Gales Ferry, would that have the solar panels on it also?
I don't believe there was any design for that. I thought I believe the way that building is situated, that is a east facing.
West.
West facing.
Yeah.
There is, um I was talking to the solar company earlier in the week. And based on the Juliette Long usage, um they were recommending a smaller array there, which would be a little bit less money. Uh but I also talked to them about the possibility of taking part of that array and sending it across that uh walkway into Gales Ferry to offset more of the electric use to Gales Ferry.
Okay, thank you. What what I'm doing is is I'm I'm taking the liberty to I think I had one other question on the on that spreadsheet. The electrical upgrades at the high school. It doesn't look like the mayor is supporting that. Is that am I reading this correctly?
Let me give me one second. Uh yeah, that's how I'm reading it also.
Okay, and and how how significant or how significant are those electrical upgrades as far as you're concerned?
We're not having a huge problem with the electrical service in that building. It is was built in the sixties, so it's fifty something years old. So at some point, we're going to have trouble getting replacement breakers and stuff that will need it. But it's not a critical issue that I'm, you know, I would say that, you know, it's going to fail in the next year or two.
And and my and my final question to you, Wayne, is is how are we doing on asbestos in our active schools? If somebody asked me, can I say that there's zero?
No, you can't. The uh as much as they could remove of the two renovated buildings was removed, the two additions have no asbestos containing materials. Uh I believe before I got here, there were projects done to remove the asbestos can containing tiles and adhesives on the floors and uh the middle school, uh not the middle school, but the uh uh Juliette Long and the high school. We completed the tunnel abatement last summer at the high school. But we do have some fittings on on piping in the ceilings, heat piping and stuff at the high school and probably Juliette Long that's still, you know, probably contain asbestos. As we go through a project, we test and remove as we need to.
I said that was my last question, but this is kind of a follow on. So it so if if systems are maintained, either preventive or corrective, then if if asbestos is found, your plan is is to remove that?
Yeah, as long as as long as it's within a reasonable scope, you know, we have limited budgets on the district uh for those kind of things. But you know, if we come across like uh part of this capital plan is the renovation of the last two bathrooms at the high school. The first two were found to have asbestos in them. Uh we budgeted in nine thousand dollars. The one we did last year, we tested it did not have any asbestos. So we don't know what we're going to find in the next one.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
Uh Mr. Donaldson, I noticed that for the Juliette Long roof replacement, it includes um insulation, bringing that up to current building code. Is that uh insulation included in any of the other roofing?
Yes, uh the any roofing project is going to be required to bring it up to grade. I believe that Juliette Long was stated that way because we know the insulation is saturated and will have to be replaced. Recently, to the best of my understanding now, I could be wrong, is the state changed their specifications and no longer requires you to do a total uh rip off down to your base metal um and then replace everything. They've kind of realized that the insulation is good. There's no reason to replace it if it's wet, gets replaced. Um and then they may have to add to it to make meet the current building codes.
Okay, good. Now's the time to do that.
You know, one other quick one, if I could, Mike Cherry again. You know, I noticed that if Julie Long gets approved as proposed, we got a roof, we got Hy-Vac, got electrical upgrades, and we have solar. And and that may be an ideal time to try and figure out how to provide those two buildings, Gales Ferry, Juliette Long, from one system. And that would then enhance the ability to uh put more solar cells on top of Juliette Long and feed Gales Ferry.
Yes, we could gladly look into that.
And you know, but I don't want to propose another hundred thousand dollar engineering project either.
No, I don't think it'd be that much.
Being being an engineer, I always look for things like that without thinking about the cost.
I I don't think it'd be that expensive. They'd either run a conduit across the uh walkway and into the other building or just trench it. And there isn't much distance at the shortest part between the two buildings.
I can't think of another reason to keep picking on Wayne because it's
That's all right.
What I did notice is
Any questions you have?
Well, we're we're proposing six million dollars for this budget cycle. And the five year plan has like eight and a half in it. So we're proposing most everything is this year because that's where we're putting the roofs and that's the the big dollar thing. So you know, I fully support it and I'd be happy to talk in any public hearing where people say, why are we doing roofs? And we're doing roofs because we haven't done the roofs in the past because it was expensive.
Good way to lose a building is not do the roof.
Yeah.
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 All right, so then um.
Does anyone have any questions in on any of the other capital requests or not Board of Education?
Yeah, my favorite one, road restoration. I see we're proposing one point uh one point one, one point two million.
Yep.
We know that our threshold to not lose too much ground is about seven hundred and fifty to eight hundred thousand. So the one point two kind of tells me we've got some repairs to be made before we lose more ground. Is that with your discussion with Steve, is that close to true?
Uh I actually have not discussed it with Steve. Usually we do uh what we've been doing for the past two years is all of the folks that have put capital requests, we all meet in the same room. And we each talk about the others' capital request. So everybody knows what's going on. But of course, this year kind of hard. Covid, we were not able to do that as we did last year. And it's it's really informative. Certainly, I can see that the mayor uh recommended nine hundred and fifty thousand. So there must be some, you know, pretty good need to
Yeah, I mean, that's a that's a plus up, which
Right.
Good. Little bit less than we asked for, but
Right.
That's consistent.
Yeah, yeah. So but nine hundred and fifty thousand isn't too bad uh from what he asked for. But um some of that, it says, and bear with me, uh of that amount, two seventy three, eight twenty three will come from taxes and the remaining balance of six hundred and seventy six thousand, one seventy seven will come from grants. So um
We hope.
We hope. So that's that's the that's the hope there. So um yeah, unfortunately, and it's in one of the reasons the first year that I was here, we started each of a um having a group capital meeting was so that we could all answer the questions about each other's requests. But unfortunately, this year I was not privy to that conversation. I apologize. I can certainly find out for you, though, Mike.
No, it's just it it showed up as a bigger number.
Yes.
Closer to what I believe we really need, which surprised me. And so I thought I'd ask.
Well, that's good.
Are you talking about uh the road Restoration Fund?
Correct.
So that's listed at six million, six hundred and ninety?
No, you're in the five year.
You're in the five years now or
That's why I was following along. And then I thought we've got major
Yeah.
discrepancies to discuss.
Yeah, so that's the five year total. Um but this year, um the town engineer requested one million, one hundred and fifteen thousand, and the mayor recommended nine hundred and fifty thousand. And I'm trying to see town council recommended nine hundred and fifty thousand as well. I have a handy dandy Excel spreadsheet with different colors. So if anybody has any questions about any of them, I can sort of help you out. Um it it was kind of hard to get. I tried to print it out and add it on, but it was not even you wouldn't have even been able to read it. You know, it was so small, the print. So I basically have a little bit of a different um spreadsheet. But what you have is what it is. Um and just to let you know, this year, normally what happens is with the capital plan, I put out an email to everyone with two word with a word form and an Excel Excel spreadsheet, and everyone has to fill in their capital needs and requests. And then they send it back to me. And then Marsha and I have to type everything in by hand. So this year, what we did was we went to a um uh program called ClearGov. And with ClearGov, um we send out a link to everyone and everyone enters their own right there. And then the finance department can do spreadsheets and whatnot from there. So it's been amazing. Um they can send. So the mayor, um Marsha Hancock and I are the sort of administrators. Uh we can go in and ask questions. Um the folks that enter their numbers can ask questions. It's super easy and it's been an amazing uh. I mean, that was a lot of work to enter everybody's, you know, first they have to type it in and then we have to type it in. So it was a lot of work and there was some room for error. So this was a really, really great idea that uh the finance director and the mayor decided to go with this year, and it's worked out really good.
It generates some amazing reports.
It sure does.
Nice graphs, pie charts. And it's all online. So you know, it you don't have to print it out. You can pick and choose.
That was part of the reason so that we could have, you know, more public access um to this document. So when it was ready to go, it was posted so that the, you know, anybody could see it from online. So it was an amazing idea and it worked out really well. First shot, everybody loved it. And uh we have this beautiful, you know, like you said, beautiful reports, beautiful pie charts. So I want to give a shout out to the mayor and Marsha for um putting that forward.
Unfortunately, I wish we had some way of seeing how many hits that site has seen from non-commissioned or elected personnel in the town of Legerd because it's probably, once again, very few.
I I'll ask Marsha if if they have any, you know, if there's any, you know, uh count going on there, but I'm not positive that there actually is.
My belief is Mr. Treister is going to be very busy. People finally realize the reassessment with the reduction in mill rate still results in a tax increase for those with homes priced below the median in Legerd. They haven't figured it out yet, but they will. And at that point, the Board of Assessment appeals.
It's coming. Be busy. But no, everything's worked out great. And if um nobody has any further questions, I can put forth that a favorable report from this commission to the town council. I believe the hearing is um at the end of the month.
I I actually want to comment on something that Liz, before we uh is that okay with you, Madam Chair? Because I know you had your hand up also. Uh I'm 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 a great library user in town. Uh and I think libraries are the best thing since sliced bread, even the even though there uh most of the a lot of the information, not most uh can be gotten when I want to Google something. But I see that a feasibility study is new and is not funded. And um some of us that have been in town a long time, whenever budgets need to be cut, uh the library seems to be the low hanging fruit. So I'm wondering, uh it's a new item, it says in the spreadsheet. But I'm wondering why it's uh why it hasn't gotten any traction from it appears anyone.
I'm sorry, Mr. Wood. I I don't have the answer to that, but I can certainly um, you know, put that forth in 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 the report that you support, you know, um improvements to the library, including feasibility studies.
Yeah, I'm not sure I know what feasibility is and so I
Either actually, like you said, it's
So so I I want
From the architect.
I want more of a class, you know, more of a clarification. Is a feasibility study that uh you know, it should be closed in three years? And that's not what I want to have happen. So I'd like to know the yeah, I'm just I'm I'm just curious on that. I'll I'll stop, but I I would like to know more on that.
Your woman, I think, has some more information. She's looking at something I don't have, I think.
Well, it's the um the Bill Library Edition feasibility study item. They're looking at it in the twenty twenty four. In the in the within the five year plan, it's listed, and it seems like they want it to be complete in twenty twenty four. And it sounds to me like the feasibility study is an architectural study to decide how they will add space to the library, which is has been determined to be short on space.
We've we've talked about that about five years ago. What was before before the proposal to close the Gales Ferry Library, we were talking about getting more space in both libraries. So I'm probably back ten years at this point. Tom, you were nodding. I know it's a long time ago. We did a study.
Yeah.
And couldn't find the money. And at that point, I think it was going to cost like four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to give us everything we needed.
So add twenty five percent to that.
Oh, at least, at least. That's the only thing we know for sure is that the longer we wait, the less we can afford it. I agree with uh
You're right, Mike. It was ten years ago at least.
All right, so I believe we with those comments, Liz, we have a favorable report to share.
Yes, I'm sorry, I was muted. Yes, I will um put a letter together as is typical, and I'll take care of that on Monday. And I will note that, you know, the PZC does support uh the library feasibility study.
Great. So then we'll move on to the next agenda item to approve the minutes of the March eleventh meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mike Cherry, I'll second.
Okay. Then we'll vote on it. Mr. Bedrow?
In favor.
Mr. Wood?
Hi.
Mr. Cherry?
Hi.
Mr. Capone?
Hi.
And chairman votes yes as well. So we will approve the minutes. Do we have any correspondence?
I don't have any correspondence, Madam Chairman.
Okay. Okay, then we'll move to reports. And if you'd like to give your town planner a report?
Yeah, so I'm going to give all of you just a brief update, and then I have something that I want to run by you. I just want to let you know that our Lothip application, uh Steve Maslin and I met Tuesday with our consultants, Weston and Sampson. And um we we buttoned up a few things that we had to work on for that application. And it will be submitted to the Cog tomorrow. Um and I will have a copy of that. And um I can send it off to everybody. Um the what we're doing tomorrow is they're submitting a sort of a draft final. We're going to get comments from Kate Ratan, who's the transportation manager for the Cog. And then after that, um you know, it'll be submitted to DOT. I'm really excited about it. It's it's we uh added a few things. We we brought the sidewalk up a little further. We're going to connect the sidewalk to the uh high school. So when you come out of the high school, the pathway was supposed to end at one of the parking lots. So to So to avoid students having to cross the parking lot, to get to the path, we're going to bring the path up further. Put in some bike racks and connect the sidewalk to the existing sidewalk at the high school. There's going to be some traffic calming measures put in at the bottom of Gallup Hill Road for the crosswalk there. And this is just going to be such a really cool project. So as soon as I get the final draft, I'll send it off to all of you, but I just want to let you know that that is moving along. We submitted our first quarterly report on April 2nd. So we're, we're procedurally complying with the requirements of the grant. The Legerd Center feasibility study was actually awarded to Weston and Sampson. One of the reasons being that they are working on our Lothip project and they might, you know, be able to have some really good insight into running a sewer line from Legerd Center down to the high school at least. For, well, not as part of our Lothip grant, but hey, if we're already digging for the path, you know, maybe there's a possibility to dig a little deeper and run that pipe then, pipe in. So they're going to be doing that feasibility study. They were just awarded that project last week. So we'll be working with them on that as well as the Lothip path in not just the sewer line running. They're also going to be providing alternatives for sanitary waste, disposal systems, batch plants and whatnot in the Legerd Center Design District and the Legerd Center Transitional District as well. We asked them to increase the scope of the zone to include some of those properties as well. So that's all going along. Well, the steep grant, we, we finally got the paperwork from the DECD and we sent them all of our paperwork back and the resolution that the town council gave in August was 128,205 dollars and the grant was 128,154 dollars. And we had, I had to go back to finance last week because they want the resolution changed to the exact amount. And typically, the council doesn't require us to go back if it's less money than they authorize. But DECD wants everything to be perfectly matched up. So that went through Finance Committee last night and it'll go through Town Council tomorrow night. And then we should be able to get started on the town green improvement. We're finally getting some communication from DOH for the Legerd Housing Authority Project. As you know, we got the, the first batch of money from the CDBG grant and then another 1.2 million from CHAFA. So our consultant is working with CHAFA and DOH to, you know, get all of the required documents together for that project. And, you know, you, you've seen our agenda. Those are, those are other things I've been working on. But one thing I wanted to bring to the commission is I met with some folks that are interested in bringing a private, privately-run dog park to Gales Ferry Design District. And Kyle and I met with them and we found that in the Gales Ferry Design District, there's a couple of uses that it could go under. I actually also spoke with Nate about this before the meeting. And he thought that perhaps it could be classified as parks and playgrounds, which is a permitted use in the zone. But the other use that I thought it could be, you know, classified as is as a personal service establishment. The definition of our, and, and some, I don't want you to take this the wrong way, folks. So our personal service establishment says establishments primarily engage in providing services involving the care of a person or his or her personal goods or apparel. And for you dog lovers out there, I don't want to, you know, suggest that your dog is your personal good. But where, if we had a dog grooming store that wanted to go in the Gales Ferry Design District, we would allow it to go into that space as a personal services establishment. So I thought, to me, parks and playgrounds is more of a public use. But I just wanted to, both uses are allowed in the zone, but the, the people that came to me with this proposal would like to get a little feedback from you before they, you know, go any further with their project. So what do you all think of a private dog park in the Gales Ferry Design District? I, I think it could be a hit. From what I understand, it would be privately run. You would have a membership of some sort. I don't have all of the details, but you would have to, you know, provide documentation that your dog is vaccinated. There would be rules. I'm assuming there would be areas for small dogs and big dogs. I don't have all of the details yet. But I'd love to know what you all think about it.
I think it's.
Go ahead, Kate.
I think it sounds like, whether it's parks or personal services, sounds to me like it could be a suitable use for that district. And I don't know how many other dog parks we have, and if it's willing to be privately owned and maintained. As long as the, you know, appropriate safety and sanitary measures are followed, I think it sounds like a good use for the, for that area.
I, I think we're, we're, this is Mike Cherry, we're in the same difficulties that some people have had before. Dog parks and such have been the third rail in other communities. Stonington, Stonington Borough, both had troubles coming through it. But I agree that that personal services be the right thing. It's a byright use in the district. And a lot of the things they would have to do has nothing to do with zoning. You know, we, we tend to try and regulate the world under the guise of, or the flag of zoning when that may not be appropriate. So I, I think I would go with personal services more than parks and rec. But absolutely allowed and not anywhere else in town. So, you know, it's not a.
I'm sorry, go ahead. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, it's not a kennel. So I, I think, you know.
Correct.
No boarding, just dog park.
You know, they would have, you know, hours of operation and whatnot. And, you know, certainly they would have to comply with any other state requirements with regards to health districts. You know, and, and any other local requirements as far as I, I don't know. Fire Marshal, Fire Marshal inspects all businesses in town. Typically, you see most dog parks are municipal. So this is someone that wants to come in Legerd and bring something that's private, that the town does not have to bear the cost of, as Katie said, cost of maintaining it. And I think it's sort of a great idea.
Plus, the property remains, wherever it is, it remains on the tax rolls instead of becoming a municipal piece of property.
And it's a light use on the land, so anyone who buys it could still build whatever else is appropriate.
And, and, you know, it, it could go anywhere it would fit. You know, that could be a good use. We've been looking for a long time trying to figure out what to do with Cartway. It could go there.
I actually never thought of the Cartway property, but yeah.
Datacon building's still empty, but they'd have to demolish the building and I think that building still has usefulness. So I won't even say anything about that. But there are underutilized parcels throughout Gales Ferry that would be appropriate.
Good. I just, they wanted to get a feel from the commission if, you know, how you felt about it. And I wanted to get a feel from you as to what use it would be established. Certainly, they would have to come before the commission for a site plan approval because it's a commercial use. So they would do that. They would come before us. They would show where there would be parking for the dog park. The, in the, you know, the park areas in any buildings that would go with it. So that would come back to you for a site plan review and approval. That would not be administrative.
Can I just ask a question? Because when I mentioned, oh, my goodness, business plan. When I mentioned it when Paul was on, Paul Mogo, but is part of the submission for a site plan, a, a business plan?
No, but it could be, and I believe these folks actually do have a business plan. So I certainly could ask them to submit that as part of the site plan, just as, you know, additional information. What we're looking at is, I mean, we really don't have any authority over business plans. I'm sure they'd be happy to provide it to you as, as, you know, accessory to the application. But what we're looking for is a site plan that complies with our site plan requirements. If it complies with our site plan requirements, you have to approve it. So, but that is, that's a commercial use and that would come to the commission for review and approval.
We, we've asked in the past for, not so much business plans, but viability plans. So you want to build a restaurant, what's your experience? How much money are you prepared to lose before you start making a dollar? You know, those types of things.
Say that, because then he'll say that you need a special use permit.
It's not zoning. It's just.
Here, I'm just teasing. So yes, I, I'm sure that these folks would be happy to present their business plan to you as part of their application. But they would be submitting a site plan in accordance with our regulations for this, for this use, should they decide to go forward. And I think they'll be really happy to hear that, the favorable comments.
I, I mean, if the site plan meets our regulations, I don't know why we would need a business plan, because it would also have hours of operation and that kind of information, right?
Think, yeah.
So, but if they're willing to provide it.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I don't think there's any harm in asking and whether, and, and I like Mike's words viability. But it would, it would, I, I think where I'm coming from on planning and zoning is, is that we have this dog park, private dog, dog park this year. And next year, we have something else that may, may be similar or maybe in competition with it. And so it, it would be good to know what, what their, what their plans are. Don't call it a business plan or whatever the case may be. You know, I could see something like, like this, depending on the property going into kennel type of arrangement.
But that would be a change of use. If they came in for a site plan approval for a dog park, they could not have a kennel without coming back to the commission. And kennels are not permitted uses, I do not believe, in the Gales Ferry Design District. Kyle, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
Only place they're allowed is in our industrial district.
Right. So, so they could not have a kennel there. Again, you could have a grooming shop in a, in a storefront as a personal service establishment. But you could not have a kennel, you could not have boarding in the Gales Ferry Design District. That's not what this would be. It would be a dog park with, with, you know, hours of operation, day, daytime hours. So again, I, I'm sure they're going to be happy to explain their proposal to you when it comes to the time of the site plan. But the commission is bound by the site plan requirements when approving that type of use. I'm sorry, that's all I have. I'll, I'll turn it over to the next item now, unless anyone has any questions for me.
Just a real quick one. Have we heard anything back from Bill Sweeney on the data park, the data server thingy?
No, I've had a lot of calls from appraisers right now on that property, but I spoke with Bill Sweeney. There was a, I think there was a list pending to put on the property by an entity. And I spoke with Bill Sweeney at that time, but he had not heard anything new from the Cleman Farms LLC, Mr. Quinn at that time. And I haven't heard anything from Mr. Quinn either. So again, there's a lot of appraisers that have been stopping into my office to ask about the property. But no, nothing going forward with any applications to change the property to the Technology Park District.
I, I don't think anything's going on in Montville either, so.
No, I, I actually spoke with the planner in Montville and she confirmed that there is nothing going on there either. Although I think that there was a lot of properties that had to be put together to assemble, assemble that, that project.
But they cleared all the, all the. Demolition required and that's not my understanding.
They were, they were thrilled. Montville was thrilled because they had been trying to get the owners of those properties for years to tear down those houses that were sitting there rotting and being, you know, broken into and having the pipes taken out of them. So all of those houses along this, I can't remember the name of the road, but that road down there that goes along the river have all been demolished and taken away. So Montville's thrilled whether or not the dog, the data center was forwarded or not. Not that they wouldn't be thrilled to have that, but that was what the town planner in Montville reported to me, that they were just happy to have all those houses, you know, removed.
I, I think that's also, the positive news is, is our state legislators have taken action on a bill that I forwarded to Nate. And I'm, I'm, it would, it kind of opened the doorway for that information technology that, that you, that Mike was just asking about.
And I can, yeah, and I would love it if you could forward it to me, Mr. Wood, and I'd be happy to forward it on to everybody else. I did hear that. I haven't read it in its entirety yet, but I think that was one of the problems. Mr. Quinn was trying to get some bills passed and was having trouble doing that in prior years.
Lot of it was, was tax abatement type stuff with the state. One, one thing that the Judicial Committee of the Legislature today or yesterday voted to legalize marijuana for recreational use. There are other committees and legislative action to take place. But at the time, we, we, when we were working on the regs, we talked about marijuana as a medicinal and said, no, that'd be like a drugstore, it's a retail outlet. We're not going to jump in there and write any regs. As a recreational product, we could say it's kind of like a liquor store. But we've avoided the question and we may need to unavoid the question this year sometime. Just something to think about.
We can put that on the list for another month. How's that sound?
Hopefully, it takes them.
A few other things I think you have to do first, but that's, that's definitely one that we should probably have some discussion about right now. Most towns consider it retail, retail sales. And, and, you know, I guess everyone needs to think about their feelings on that. If somebody asked me today, my interpretation would be a retail sales, just like alcohol is retail sales. If alcohol is legal, it's a, it's a package store, it's a retail. And if you ask me today to make an interpretation, that would be my interpretation as far as, you know, the, the, the land use director. So, you know, certainly if all of you disagree, that might be something we want to have a discussion about in the future.
Well, it's funny because I think from a zoning perspective, we would probably all agree with that. But I think from a taxpayer, elector, resident, I don't know that they're going to feel the same way. I mean, it's going to be severely regulated. Why would we want to jump into that arena?
Right. So we can, we can put that on, we can put that on the list for a future discussion. And I actually wrote it down, so I won't forget.
Thanks.
That's all I have.
Kyle, are you still with us?
I am still here.
Would you like to share your report?
Yeah. So I know, I know I say this every month, but the Land Use Office is really busy right now. Springtime, everyone's doing their projects, you know, whether it's zoning or wetlands, I'm doing a lot of permits. Seven new houses got permitted last month. I actually did a couple more permits today that aren't on this list. Pool, sheds, all that. We're very busy in that area. A lot of final inspections as well. These new houses are all getting finished up this time of year, getting listed. I didn't have a whole lot of time to do enforcement this month, just was busy with office work and, you know, working with permits and stuff. 115 Meeting House Lane, we did have an unpermitted trailer. And I had to issue a cease and desist on that. That was actually resolved rather quickly. So I got that taken care of. Going to try to work on some of these older complaints as time allows. That's what I have. The new, as Liz said in that last month, Randy, our building official, retired effective last week. That's about all I have. Um, the new, as Liz said in that last month, Randy, our building official retired effective last week. Um, so our new building official started this week. Um, I know he was, he was in the office a little bit this week, but he seems like a good guy. He's working with the the public, you know, as they come in. Um, that's not always the easiest thing, so I think it's gonna be a good fit for us. Um, Bobby, have any questions?
Did I read your report right? Nineteen Military Highway has chickens?
Among other things that we're aware of.
I I just, you know, something about that corner on Military Highway just lends itself to problems.
I agree. And as staff, you know, we were, you know, we have this other stuff that might be going on there. Um, but it's, we have to take some more enforcement action at this point, unfortunately. Um, it's just come down to that.
Okay, and and you have our support. I mean, I think you and the commission and others have been more than tolerant. Sorry to say that, but yeah.
Any, anything else for anyone or?
The, just the one ongoing item about several properties with unpermitted agriculture uses. When you say several, how many?
So that was um, I don't have a date on me. It was last year. It's it's the three farms and basically it's the potential unpermitted uses. You know, I sent out that letter with the with the commission's motion, there may be unpermitted uses. So that's currently three properties. That letter was written to stay enforcement for six months. Um, I think we're coming up on that if we're not already past it. So I do need to look at that again. You know, I think we all thought this new ag reg was gonna go through quicker than it did. Um, unfortunately, that's still in the works, so I I do need to look back on that and see where we're at with the letter on that.
Are are they even looking at the non-farming uses on agricultural land when they meet? Uh, I mean, I went to a couple meetings. I started getting sick to my stomach, so I haven't sat in on any of them.
Um, honestly, I have not sat in those meetings. Just just from a, you know, enforcement end, I don't really think I should be involved maybe with deciding those rules. Um, I don't know if maybe Liz sits on some of those, if she can comment.
Um, I actually haven't uh been sitting in on those meetings. I think we're gonna have to wait until next month to get a report from Nate. I did sit in on a couple of them for a little while shortly after my back surgery and couldn't sit for too too long. So I didn't um stay on the whole meetings. I am providing support for Allison. If she has questions, the last meeting I was at, they were going through our proposed regulations one line at a time. Um, I know that Nate is there to give them some support. Um, I had attempted to give them some support at one meeting, but um I, it wasn't really met with any. I don't know what the word for it is. It it wasn't really met with, they they didn't really want my comment. So I've just sort of sat back and listened and um Nate's there at every meeting. And um, I'm sure he will give us an update in May. Um, I've been told that it may take, you know, longer. But I believe the ad hoc committee was only supported by the town council for six months.
Correct.
So if the time runs out on that ad hoc committee, either the town council has to extend it or we're going to have to take a report from them and do our own regulations based on that report. And that may be where we have to go. You know, uh, you know, I was at the EDC meeting on Monday and Rich Tashia, who is on the EDC and on the ad hoc committee, said that, you know, made a comment to the effect that, you know, they're restrictive. We're not allowing them to, you know, we're too restrictive. We have too much regulation on it. But I felt that what the, I I think I, what what I have a hard time getting some folks to understand is what the purpose of us doing these agricultural regulations was to actually allow farms to have these accessory uses, weddings, uh, events, uh, retail stores for. Um, and I don't know if I I got the the impression from Mr. Tashia at the EDC meeting that that's not how the farmers view these. So I'm um interested in finding out what they have to say. Um, so I mean, I think, you know, it's like I said, we we wrote that so that all of these agricultural uses could actually have these accessory uses and grow. And um, so I'm I'm waiting to hear exactly, you know, how they feel about that. But I'll ask Nate to give us a report at the next meeting. I haven't listened to the minutes yet of the last meeting because I was not able to attend that meeting.
Bro is also on that committee.
Yes, hi, Tom. Maybe you can give us a report.
I thought it was going along pretty well.
Okay.
We went through a number of pieces and a lot of the stuff that appears onerous has been taken out. And this right stuff has been left in. I think it's going along quite well.
Okay.
It takes a little doing because we have a lot of comments from the public. And we're trying to incorporate them and make it into the best it can be. But I think it's, I think it's uh going along better than it sounds.
Good, good.
And again, I I just, you know, I sort of got a different impression from from the EDC member. So I apologize. Um, and you know, I'm glad everything's moving along good.
Well, my my reason for the question was when we wrote the letters, we figured, you know, we had a set of draft regs that that had been put together and scrubbed a couple of times. Thank you, Liz. And we thought we were on a road to approval within two or three months. That gave you the six month option, but Kyle, I I would not be opposed to uh trying to figure out how we can tie it to the ad hoc committee's work and the commission's follow on work. Uh, I mean, we're not, we're not issuing cease and desist and citations and taking them to court. But uh, something along the lines of, we know what you're doing, you know what you're doing. In the meantime, while we're working on new regs, you can't expand what you're doing. But we're not going to require you to stop just yet. I don't know how to do that, but that's that's kind of my thought.
So here's what I'm thinking. Uh, maybe uh Kyle and I could put together a follow up letter. Tom, how long do you think before um there's gonna be a set of regs ready? Couple more months?
Oh, I expect it'll be at least that. But there's an awful lot, there's an awful lot to this, you know, because trying to fill in all the blanks and makes it make everybody, everybody happy is kind of a big deal.
Well, and and even then, when it's done, it comes to this commission to approve it. And happy, glad. Regulations, zoning, you know, we start all over once, once we get their report and their recommendations, unfortunately.
Yes, I understand.
So perhaps for the next meeting, uh, Kyle and I could put together a draft of a follow up letter that we can send out to these farms, just letting them know that, you know, status quo. Um, we know there may be uses on the property that haven't been permitted at this time. But we are uh not going to enforce them at this time, which is what the last letter said.
Well, and and they ought to realize just because you're not enforcing it today, doesn't mean you can't go in next Monday and put the hammer down and enforce the regs as written. That not not enforcing, not enforcing a reg doesn't mean we're not, that we've given up our right to enforce it. And a lot of people just don't understand that.
Correct.
But if they show us they were doing nineteen sixty-two.
Yeah, I I agree. The point of this letter was kind of, you know, so they can't claim a preexisting, you know, use or something like that. So we'll still look at that timeline and see where we're at with that in six months. Um, and I think that's a good idea is to come back next month with a proposal.
Well, you know, Kyle, I I don't want to throw sand in the gears, but meantime, somebody has appealed your decision by sending him a non-decision letter. A request for voluntary compliance doesn't sound to me like any final decision. But that being a lawyer.
That public hearing's ongoing. Um.
Yeah, we.
For the following week, so um, we'll see what happens.
We we should probably uh not discuss that. We, the, like Kyle said, the public hearing is open. The Kyle is being rep, the, one of those letters was appealed to the zoning board of appeals. Kyle's being represented by attorney Landelina. The ZBA is being represented by its own attorney. So I think that it would behoove us not to discuss that specifically.
I agree, yeah.
Well, thank you, Kyle. Does anyone have any other questions about Kyle's report?
Well, I think the one thing it shows me is that previously approved subdivision locks are rapidly being developed. And probably this summer, we're gonna see more subdivision requests of one kind or another as people look for land to develop. So in in our spare time, we may want to look over um, our uh open space and conservation subdivision regs, which we didn't really do much with when we did the regs. And just see if there's some recommendations we might want to make to each other.
I'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, I've been saying that for years. I just haven't gotten around to it.
You just gotta volunteer, so.
Yeah.
You should just go with that.
Well, I mean, that's after you read all the exhibits. I I'm.
All right, do we have any other reports?
Well, that that we put on the agenda for you, Katie.
No, we have, we haven't had a regional meeting.
Yeah.
So no, um, no other reports.
Hi, Madam Chairman. I I'd like to report that the alleged food pantry modifications to be in the Morgan Barn are coming along very nicely and they're doing a very nice job. It looks very good in there.
I heard they got some really great drawings from somebody. I I won't.
Yes, we're trying to arrange stuff.
Yeah. There, there was one report out of New Jersey that I received from Linda Davis, and that was uh Rosie O'Donnell couldn't sell her house for years and years and years. And uh, the town where it is, Sandy something or other was in uh, in court under affordable housing. So that property has been sold. They're gonna tear down her mansion and build affordable housing on that lot. And it's kind of a Tony neighborhood and they're not very happy with that.
Okay.
All right, so then uh, without any protests, I'll I'll make a motion to adjourn. Do I need a second?
Yes. Marty, did you raise your hand?
Oh, he's muted, but.
But I saw him raise his hand.
He did.
Okay.
Not a second, we're gonna have to stay, Marty.
I know it. I've some, sometimes my space bar unmutes and sometimes it doesn't. And that was the case that it did.
So then we'll, the motion is to adjourn at nine oh three. Um, Mr. Bedrow.
We don't have to vote.
We don't have to vote. Okay, well, there's a motion. Do we have to?
No, it's without objection.
Without objection, okay. I was like, I don't remember voting to adjourn, but I'll do it.
Now, you can't, you can vote to adjourn anytime during a meeting. You can make a motion to adjourn. And that requires a vote. So we could have done that at step one. But at the end of the meeting, it's just move to adjourn without objection.
Okay.
All right, Katie, thank you.
Thanks.
Good job.
Thanks, everybody. Stay safe.